Today is the Village Board, Board of Trustees, meeting agenda. It's our meeting for Monday, June 27, 2022 at 7:00 P.M. Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence? A moment of silence for all the victims of all the tragic shootings happening throughout our country. Please take a seat. We have upcoming meetings, the regular meeting scheduled for Monday, August 1, 2022, at 7:00 P.M., and a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, September 12, 2022, at 7:00 P.M. And also, we will be available, if ever a special meeting we need, that will always, we'll all be available to do that if necessary, okay? Can I please have a resolution for approval of the June 6, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Trustee Hagan.
Trustee Hagan made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. May I be, Attorney, I don't think you have anything?
Uh, no. Mr. Rice asked me to appear for him tonight. He had nothing, I have nothing unless any of the board members have any questions they'd want to pose.
Okay. Thank you.
I abstain to the June 6 meeting minutes because I was not here.
Okay. Right. All right, so, very good. You got that for Trustee Corrigan? Okay, very good. Fire Department, please.
Good evening, Village Board. On the two items for the agenda this evening, two new members, Jason Tokarski for the volunteer hose company and Vincent DeMaio for the hook and ladder company.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept new member Jason Tokarski for the volunteer hose company? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. I have a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. And can I have a motion now for a new member Vincent DeMaio for the hook and ladder company?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief? Anything going on? Lot of calls? Nothing?
Nope. We had a good weekend over at the Foreman of Artis doing a couple drills. Very well.
Very good. All right. We're working on the, as you see, we've got some motions here to fix those holes in your parking lot, okay?
Yep.
Some of the guys jump out of them cars to save us. They're, they're, they're safe doing that, okay, sir?
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good, sir.
And Chief, I'd like to thank you very much for the response time while I was in Ireland and my, I, okay? Hi. Very good. Everyone in the neighborhood was amazed and was very pleased and very, very thankful. So, the police department, Andy, you know, you guys, both, both departments were just amazing. And I'm really, really sorry they did not cover a smoke detector. And they were doing a lot of repair work with.
I'll have to tell the fire inspector.
So, sorry.
Police Department, please. Chief Lachlan, please.
Good evening, everyone. So far in the month of June, the police department has responded to just over 850 calls for service. As the board's aware, we participated in a multi-agency attack drill and training in cooperation with the Suffolk Central School District at Cherry Lane School. Doubt training was done a couple, two Mondays ago, I'm sorry, Juneteenth, the training was done. We did the training with the Roundhouse Police Department, Spring Valley Police Department, and the Rockland County Sheriff's Office. The training went very well. I was there for a while. The officers got some really good training. The feedback we got from them that it was, that it was great training and they were glad we did it. We definitely plan on holding more of these type of trainings in the future as long as the board is, is good with it. And the feedback I've received, the board is definitely supportive and, and, you know, is concerned about the safety of the, the children. So I thank you guys for that. The next training session we're planning on holding in RP Connor School, so it's right in our area. So hopefully we'll be able to get that done, you know, in the next couple of weeks. I have a couple agenda items for the board's consideration tonight. At this time, I'd like to request that the board accept the retirement of Sergeant David Tarantino. Sergeant Tarantino joined the Suffolk Police Department after transferring from the New York City Police Department in January of 1997. He served the department and the village residence honorably until his retirement on June 13 of this year. We at the police department all wish him well in his future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to move the resolution accepting Sergeant Tarantino's retirement.
I still move.
Motion made by Trustee Solomon.
Seconded by Hagan.
Second made by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My second item, I'd like to request that the board accept the resignation of part-time police officer Frank Gullah. That'll be effective on July 1, 2022. Officer Gullah came to our department after retiring from the Spring Valley Police Department in August of 2012 and served the village honorably in his 10 years with us. We at the police department would like to wish Officer Gullah well in his true retirement.
Okay. Can I get a motion to move the resolution accepting resignation of part-time police officer Frank Gullah?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? Motion passed.
Thank you.
I also have a little letter for, he wrote something. It was nice enough to write something. It says, "To Mayor Michael Curly, Village of Suffolk Chief Andy Lachlan, please accept this letter as a formal notification of my intention to resign from position as police officer badge shield number 154 with the Village of Suffolk Police Department in good standing. My final day will be July 4, 2022. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to have worked in a position the past 10 years and now it's time to move forward. I truly enjoyed being a police officer with the department. You will always be in my heart and prayers. Best wishes always. Frank Gullah." That was very nice of him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
My last agenda item is I'd like to request permission from the board to have two officers, police officers Daniel Nguyen and Michael Barry, attend training given at the New York State Homeland Security Training Center in Ruskiny, New York. The class is initial response to active shooter. We've sent several other officers to this training in the past and they've all come back and said that it was excellent, top-notch training. There's no cost to attend the training and their lodging is also provided, so there's no cost to the village for them to attend.
Very good, Chief. Can I have a motion for a resolution authorizing police officer Daniel Nguyen, police officer Michael Barry, to attend initial response to active shooter training August 2nd to 3rd, 2022?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Albert? Second made by?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Where is Ruskiny?
Motion passed. That's a good question. It's upstate. It's upstate quite a bit, you know? Okay. Just north of Utica.
Thank you. I knew it was up there somewhere. It has that kind of name.
That's all I have unless anybody has any questions or anything.
And again, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Culture and Recreation, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. So next Tuesday, July 5, will be Clifford Theater. We're starting here in the auditorium. They're gonna go from Tuesday to Friday the first week, 5:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M., and then every other week after that, Monday through Thursday, 5 to 10. The performances are gonna be Friday, July 29 at 7:00 P.M. and Saturday, July 30 at 2:00 P.M. and 7:00 P.M. here on our night stage. Then pool registration dates, we have three more coming up. We've got Wednesday, June 29, which is two days from now. It will be 2 to 7. We have Friday, July 1, which I can't believe July is starting this week. That will be 10 to 3. And then Tuesday, July 5, we extended the hours on that. It will be between 10 and 7, all upstairs in Village Hall in the community room. And then the pool hours this year are going to be Monday through Friday, 12 to 8, Saturday and Sunday, 11 to 8. And then for those of you that were at the pool, we thank you. It opened up Saturday, looking great, very happy. It was a really great opening weekend this past weekend. Tomorrow, the 28th, the primaries will be held in the community center in Leo Leiden, so there's no village activities over there. They'll be used for the primaries all day tomorrow. Concerts are coming up on Thursday nights at 7:00 P.M. All concerts will happen that evening, hopefully all outside this year. If not, it will be brought inside to the community center. And the schedule for Thursday nights is July 7. We have South Street Station. July 14 is Reflections. July 21 is Crush. And then July 28, we have Kurt Gallagher, the kids' concert in the park. At the pool this summer, we will have Family Day on Sunday, July 17. You're all invited. Welcome to come out and enjoy the activities. Clifford Theater will be going to Broadway Day on Sunday, July 24 to see Paradise Square. And then again, the shows for Clifford Theater are the 29th and the 30th. And I think that's it for now.
Just want to remind the people, this Wednesday, right Kathy?
Yes, Wednesday.
We have pool registration again from 3 to 7:00 P.M.
2 to 7.
2 to 7:00 P.M., okay? 2 to 7:00 P.M., pool registration's still open. We'll extend it as we need to extend it for the public, right? We'll keep it, and it's even gonna be after that. It's gonna be the next time after Wednesday, when's the next one?
Friday, July 1.
Friday also, okay? So you have Wednesday and Friday both this week to join, to still join the pool.
And then Tuesday, July 5 as well.
And Tuesday, July 5, all right? I know that the people were coming strong later on and it's, it's, and the pool was great this, this weekend.
It really was.
It was great. It looked great. The people were happy. The pool was busy.
Yep.
And it was, and it was very good. You can miss the most important thing, Kathy, of the whole worksheet here. You didn't mention the hula hoop contest at the pool that the mayor's having, all right?
I'm very sorry about that.
I'm very disappointed, to be truthful. There will be a hula hoop contest with the mayor and I'm the best in the world. And I've never lost a contest, so that's the truth. I've never lost a hula hoop contest, okay?
That's what I've heard and I'm very upset.
You've never gone against my daughter. She won every year in elementary school.
They will be getting prizes if they beat me. I'm sure there'll be a line. The grand finale will be the hula hoop contest between the chief of police. The mayor Curly. So, so we're probably gonna have to tackle the chief of police to bring him to the pool. Now he won't be coming to the pool. So, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I want to make a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting, please. Can I get a motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, Trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion. Public session is open. Public comment's open.
Busy night.
Everyone's at the pool. Being that there's no, being that there's no public comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment portion of this meeting. A motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, second. Second by Trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Department of Public Works, Charles Zawicki, please, sir. Charles, I'm gonna let you go through everything, explain it, you know, this, that, and then we'll do a consent agenda on all of your items, okay, sir?
Okay. Okay, good evening. Item A is a request for payment, application number 11 for Ping Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the backup power and critical facilities project. And that's in the amount of $4,302.60. Next, item B is requesting authorization for payment application number 11 to Ping Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $24,981.30. Item C, requesting authorization for payment application number 6 for Dewberry Engineers for backup power critical facilities in the amount of $5,734.70. D, requesting authorization for payment application number 6 for Dewberry for the hardening of water treatment plant in the amount of $11,777.95. Item E, requesting authorization for payment application number 4 to TAM Enterprises, Inc. for the hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $63,650. Item F, requesting authorization for payment application number 5 to TAM Enterprises for the hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $25,103.75. Item G, requesting authorization for payment application number 4 for Meale Electric Company for the hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $69,350. And that's all the applications for payments. The two remaining items would be requesting authorization to award the 2022 Right-Away Improvements Project to Diamond Construction in the amount of $232,175. Item I, requesting authorization to award the roadway improvements Phase 12 project to Tilcon New York, Inc. for the base bid amount of $407,260 and bid alternate number 1 in the amount of $137,070. I got a typo here. I think it's 7, it's either 750 or 75. I'm sorry. Apologies. Do we, anybody have that number?
13748875, Charles, what we have.
For the, for the bid alternate number 1?
Yes.
Okay.
The bid alternate is the parking lots for the fire department.
Right.
Correct, Charles?
That's correct. Correct. Yes.
Any questions, Charles? Anyone?
Actually, I do have one question, one quick question. What's the, for the amount that's for the right-of-way improvements, what sort of coverage, what would be getting done during that?
Okay, so the right-of-way improvement project consists of curbing, replacement curbing on Parkside from where we left off the, the new pavement from last year.
Yeah.
To Salem Lane. And that would, that would, it also includes some ADA ramps as well. On Milford Lane, there was ADA ramps, a number of ADA ramps. On West Malpe Avenue, ADA ramps. That is what consists of the right-of-way improvement project.
Have we selected the streets in roadway improvement Phase 12 yet?
Yes. The right-of-way improvement project.
Not right-of-way, the, the reconstruction, resurfacing.
Yeah, the, um.
You mean the pavement, correct? Means the pavement.
Yeah, that's what we're calling the roadway improvements Phase 12. I'm sorry. Apologize. Uh, yeah, so what we have there is, we have Parkside Avenue, Claremont Lane, Milford Lane, and West Malpe Avenue.
So just those four streets?
Yes, that's correct.
Parkside's pretty long, right? Milford's pretty long.
Yeah, and then Milford's a very.
Some of its continuation of what was started already.
Yeah, so there's still, there is another piece of Parkside that would, would certainly look at and consider for next year.
Based on the funds we were able to put together, right?
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve these resolutions and a consent agenda, items 8A to 8I? Please, a motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Charles?
All right, thank you.
Treasurer, Michael Janito, please.
Evening, Mayor and Board. One quick note on the resolutions you just adopted for the road improvements. You mentioned alternate 1. I don't think the amount for alternate 1 is included in those two amounts. So I think if we could have one more resolution, it would be worded very similar. I can work with the attorney on the wording of the resolution, but it would be to accept the award or award the bid for alternate 1 as well.
Sure, I'll do that right now, okay? Can I have a motion to accept a bid for the alternate 1? That would be the firehouse parking lots, please. I have someone make a motion on that, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion by, by Trustee Corrigan. Seconded by Trustee Albert.
Albert, yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The first thing on the, on the agenda for us is the authorization to approve bonding for improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. And just a quick background on that, as you know, we have this major project underway with the wastewater treatment plant. That project envisioned a number of improvements. It's being financed partially by a grant of $2,250,000. And currently, there's bonding in place through the Environmental Facilities Corp. for the remainder of that project cost. In conversations with Charles and as, as the project went underway, it was determined that the ultraviolet, and Charles, please correct me if I say anything incorrect here, the ultraviolet disinfection system of the plant is outdated and needs to be replaced. And after some discussion with Charles and we also talked with the EFC, if we could roll this into the other project, now the benefit of that is that we get up into the top scoring that we received on the initial project. And it makes it a lot easier to maintain this as a part of that older project. The EFC said they could do that for us. And the critical issue here is that the Environmental Facilities Corp.'s intended use plan, there's a deadline which comes this, this month to have the information in there to the EFC so it can be listed. So we did list it with them, the bonding amount, the additional amount is $1,740,000. That doesn't mean that we borrow this or any of the other money immediately, just so you understand, half of the money from the EFC is currently being borrowed at 0% short-term rate. The other half, we haven't started tapping into. When we do tap into that short-term money, it's at a 0.32% rate. And then when the project goes to a full bonding, which might be 25 or 30-year life, we will get the triple A rate from the EFC and most likely about half of that money, we will get subsidized on the interest of about 50%. So it's an extremely beneficial long-term and short-term savings for the village. So that's the first bond resolution, the first resolution we have before you. It does require a four affirmative votes on a roll call from the village board for approval.
And just to let you know, this, this ultraviolet system that we have is decades old. And, and what it actually does, it, it kills different bacteria and it kills E. coli. So we don't want to get, you know, we're just being responsible government and doing what we have to do for not just short-term but, but long-term. So if I could, could I, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Can I get a motion now to accept this?
Trustee Solomon make such a motion?
Trustee made by Trustee Solomon for the bonding? Can I get a second, please? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I have to roll call vote. I have a motion. I have a motion.
I'll give a second.
Give me a second by Joe Corrigan.
I'll second.
Joe Corrigan make a second? Now I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
And myself, Mayor Curly, yes. Okay, Mr. Janito?
Yes, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the closure of various capital projects. This actually was brought up at the June 6 meeting, but unfortunately, I guess we had discussion on it and it was such a lively discussion, we forgot to vote on it. So of these projects, it's, it's moving money from the projects that have closed back to the funds that they would belong in.
Okay, can I please have a, a motion to, to, to close the author, closure of various capital projects, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Trustee made by Trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is a minor adjustment to a project, the fire ATV with trailer project. The project is now completed. We have $28.39 that we have to add to it, so this is asking that we transfer that money from the general fund to finance that, that balance.
Okay, can I get a motion to amend project 2022-003 fire ATV with trailer, please? Motion?
Motion, Hagan.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
The third item is a, or fourth item is to amend the project 2023-001 for police cars. You approved that project for $180,000. It appears that the bids that have come in under a state contract come to $6,822 more. So we're asking to amend that project. The financing for it will come from DARE funds.
I have a motion to amend project 2023-001 for police cars. Motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Albert, second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, the last resolution is for authorization for myself, the mayor, and the village clerk to attend the Nikon Fall Training School, September 12 to the 16th, 2022, in Saratoga Springs, New York. And that, and that's going to be at the $357 conference rate and a lodging cost of $327 per night for whatever nights they, we happen to stay there. As my experience with the conferences that there are certain days that are the days you really should go and attend and other days you just don't bother with. So that's what, and of course, they would follow our travel reimbursement policy.
Can I get a motion, please, authorize the mayor, the treasurer, and clerk to attend the Nikon 2004 Training School?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
I get a motion? Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. And I just want to mention with the, with the police cars, saying that their car actually costs the most out of all those cars because of all the things it takes. So that's why the, their car will be spending more money there, which will be, that's where some of that money, that's where that money's going that way. The trustees, have any comments?
All right, Frank. I want to thank the village for allowing us to do that Taste of Suffering by the Lions Club. Thanks, everyone that came. It was a big success and I hope we can keep doing it in the future. Thank you.
Right, okay. Very good. Frank, anyone else? Okay. I guess, uh, trustees, okay, I guess I'll go now. Okay, I guess, trustees, okay, I guess I'll go now. I want to, I just want, if I can do this, I want to appoint Melissa Raymer to the recreation committee also, since she's always there assisting me with things and, and the recreation committee. Can I get a motion, please, on that?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Melissa Raymer, by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee, uh, trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I just want to let the people know that when you see us spending big money on these different things with the UV rages, because we're taking the responsibility, as boards have in the past, to, to worry about what could happen in, like immediate needs in the future. During the last couple of weeks, we had a, we had a situation where an electrical wire went from the transformer all the way to the wells. And we had to get generators in, you know, and we had emergency repairs and emergency things, right? This is a wire that was probably rated about for 20 years and was there over 40 years. So we make decisions, responsible decisions, all right? At the same time, not trying to hit everyone's pocket, you know, try to keep the taxes down, but at the same time, keep the residents safe, right? I'd also like to, to mention that Elijah, Senator Elijah Melnick and his wife Shelley had a, had a baby on June 14th, five pounds, three ounces. And myself and the village, our lives are wisdom, are happy and healthy, enjoy life together. He was supposed to sit down with me, the senator, recently because of his baby. He didn't, in reference to some grants, he's, you know, Senator Melnick has been, has been, he, he's interested, he cares about this village and we're gonna be sitting down with some other grants. Fred's not here, the grant writer, but he also had another grant through the county. People would think it was more like the, the restaurant grants, but actually it was a grant for, for up to 2,000, for $5,200,000 that I put Fred on that we, we are now applying